My name is Vanessa Knight. I'm under the cohort group for ARAAG, the Alexandria Residents' Action Group. We'd like to welcome you all tonight on behalf of our association plus friends of Erskineville. We've got a fairly packed agenda tonight. We have seven candidates who have asked to speak to you. I'm very pleased about that. Thank you all for coming tonight. But that does mean that we've got a fairly packed agenda. So, the things I'd ask is if you could please have your mobile phones off? If also, you could hold questions until the end of all speakers. They will each be speaking for 10 minutes and no more. At the end, we'll have an open forum. I know that's a lot to ask, but we hope that you'll keep with us. We have got someone who will be recording the session tonight, so does anyone have any objections to that? Great, thank you. All right. So, as I said, welcome everybody. Tonight, I'll be co-chairing with Mike Patton from Friends of Erskineville. So, if I could ask you to be respectful of the speakers, listen to what they have to say, and then ask your questions at the open session at the end. Thank you.
Thanks. As Vanessa said, we've got a pretty packed agenda. What will happen is each candidate will get 10 minutes to speak. At eight minutes, there will be a bell, and at nine minutes, there will be a further bell. In 10 minutes, the microphone will be shut off. It's great to see you all here, and it's great to see you taking an interest in what's happening in our community. Our first speaker tonight is councillor Irene Doughtley from the Greens. Thank you, Irene.
Hello. I'd like to acknowledge that... Hello. Okay. I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting on Aboriginal land, Gadigal land, and I pay my respects to the elders, past and present. As the combined Resident Action Groups have asked candidates to address some specific issues, I will only briefly touch on the Greens' general platform, although it does underpin my answers to your very different questions. Our vision of the city, where communities have more control, their development is appropriate, well-planned and sustainable, and which is accessible and affordable for everyone, is very relevant to the concerns of this forum. I think I could say that across the LGA, there has been an imperative to increase development and the number of people who are predicted to live within our very space-restricted suburbs. With every development, from Harold Park to the Ashmore Estate, we have seen pressure to increase the height and density of buildings without doing the social impact assessments and TMAPs necessary to ensure the amenity and needs of the old and new residents will be met. Continuing practice of treating large-scale developments in isolation without considering cumulative impacts of surrounding developments is a huge problem that needs to be addressed. Without doing this, the infrastructure needs of an area are not even identified, let alone considered. If we look at the area in a two-kilometre circle from where we are tonight, we are faced with a ring of huge development, beginning with Green Square, taking in Redfern and Waterloo, North Everleigh and the Ashmore Estate. The impacts are going to be incredible, yet we see no sign of a credible approach to macking the impact of thousands of new residents on the existing infrastructure. We can't even get them to put a lift into Redfern Station, let alone consider the lack of transport and education facilities in the area. In terms of transport, we look at the proposed Ashmore Estate, for example. We are faced with a dire situation where it is impossible to join a train at Erskineville Station, and the buses are few, crowded, and far between. Harold Park has a similar problem with limited public transport and massive traffic issues. In all of the developments mentioned, it's been up to a couple of councillors, the community, and the Resident Action Groups to fight with authorities to even consider making TMAPs of the affected areas. Greens MP, J.D. Parker, has been a consistent voice calling for a proper traffic study around the Harold Park site, and I am very familiar with the long and ongoing battle that has faced Alexandria residents dealing with parking issues from Channel 7 and the Australian Technology Park. In terms of enterprise zones, I'm very sceptical of any claims the Green paper might make about improving infrastructure. If they can't do it with existing developments, it's highly unlikely they would be able to supply new infrastructure for hypothetical enterprise zones. The Greens believe enterprise zones are a developer's delight, with no controls and no input from council while the residents. The fact that North Everleigh has been mentioned as a possible enterprise zone should make residents very nervous. I remember when the master plan was put on exhibition in 2008 for North Everleigh, residents had many concerns, but at least then, there were some controls and residents could object to overshadowing at the southern end and traffic concerns. Under an enterprise zone, it would be a free-for-all for the developers with no controls to protect local amenity. With the upzoning of the eastern side of Redfern Station rotating stories, it is highly likely that high-rise would dominate the site if it was classified an enterprise zone. I acknowledge that North Everleigh's site is suitable for development, but needs to be done in consultation with the residents in a well-designed, sustainable, and appropriate manner. I am a great supporter of precinct committees and have made their creation one of the main plates of our vision for the City of Sydney. It is incredibly important for local residents, whether owners, tenants, or business people, to have a say in what is happening in their local area. They need to be notified of all proposed developments, upgrades, policy considerations, and what project should be done to enhance their precinct. Precinct committees would give residents the organisation to work with council and the state government on issues such as whether to approve enterprise zones or whether to call for a more appropriate suburban character zone, which theoretically would protect the residential and heritage nature of an area into the future. As to whether we would go for the North Sydney model or the Canada Bay experiment, I think the first thing council would need to do would be to analyse all the different models of precinct committees that exist in the city. Before making that decision, I believe the final report would need to be put on exhibition and the residents could have input into what sort of precinct committee was chosen. We would probably come up with a hybrid that was more appropriate for a global city with numerous different precincts and priorities. What is approved good in one LGA may not be appropriate in another, and I think we would need to find a model that could be adapted to the different precincts of our city. My gut feeling is that the Canada Bay model is too much like market research or political polling procedure and could attract people who are not really that concerned about different parts of the precincts. I believe everyone should have the opportunity to be involved in the future of their neighbourhoods, not just a handful randomly chosen by ballot. Demographics are important, but finding the right people who are prepared to take the time and energy to learn about planning, budgets, and the government regulations that allow council to function needs a dedication that comes from neighbourhood power, not from paid invitations. However, it should be considered when deciding the model to be used. Finally, we need to address the issue of parking, and it's an issue that I know causes endless problems across the LGA. I support the idea of trying to discourage extra car use in the city because the simple fact is that there are more cars and there is space to put them. It is really important that we encourage people moving into an area where there is good transport, like Redfern, to consider alternative forms of transport, like public transport, car sharing, cycling. However, what I found after one term on council is that there are a plethora of rules and regulations which differ for different types of housing tenure, and I believe that we need to reconsider these differences and to review the number of car parks allowing new medium and high-rise developments. I was shocked by the decisions that were made in regard to the Turtle Lane development, where five townhouses were spottened into a small workshop site in a tiny back lane in Erskineville, while a corner terrace was approved for redevelopment into three strata units. The five townhouses were allowed up to two parking spaces each, while the three strata dwellings were denied any parking at all. This discrepancy in who is eligible for on-street parking is a real issue that needs to be addressed. I also acknowledge the problems experienced in Alexandria, where a trial parking permit system is to take place to try and stop commuters from parking in residents' parking spots. The problems are right across the LGA and need to be reviewed. With big projects like Harold Park coming online, this will be essential. TMAPs and social impact assessments need to be developed to analyse how much parking is really needed and how it can be supplied. My vision for the future of our city is a community-based vision, where residents are as much a part of the decision-making in their suburbs as the authorities, and where small businesses can prosper in collaboration with its neighbours. It is a city that supports and promotes affordable housing and protects those living in public housing and other forms of low-income tenure, like boarding houses. It is a city where development is smart, innovative, well-designed, and sustainable, where green open space is prioritised, and urban forests are cultivated to keep house in school and full of biodiversity. My green city is a city for everyone, that welcomes diversity in all its forms and takes its lead from its residents, respecting the residential and heritage nature of our neighbourhoods while planning for appropriate future development. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
That's very spreadsheet. I think the end of seven people talking was really hard, wasn't it?
Yes.
Can you all hear me if I don't use the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, I think...
Little man's mic.
I'll stand up so that you can see me as well as hear me. So, I would like to, as Irene did, start with acknowledging the original custodians of the land, of the Gadigal people, the Orang nation, and pay my respects to elders both past and present. I lead a team of residents and business people for the 2012 election, many of whom are here tonight, and I invite them to stand up so you can see who they are, and I encourage you to talk to them afterwards. The election, don't be modest. So, not all here, some of them are here. This election is about the future of our city, about whether we continue to have progressive, stable government by a team with a record of getting things done. In 2004, my team was elected on a platform of City of Villages, where we've worked to foster villages that are inclusive and diverse, places where all our communities can feel safe, and where families can grow, and with access to all their needs within walking distance. You've asked me tonight to respond to three questions in particular: planning, transport, and community engagement; issues that need local and state government to work together. First of all, planning. Under the New South Wales Government's targets, the city has to provide 61,000 new homes and 114,000 new jobs by 2036. Our policy is to protect our historic neighbourhoods such as Glebe, Erskineville, Alexandria, et cetera, and to locate these new homes in our urban renewal sites such as Harold Park, Green Square, CUB, and Ashmore. The council has developed a draft city plan after extensive consultation and research, which replaces the 60 plans we inherited following the amalgamation. As we developed the city plan, we had more than 100 meetings and workshops with residents, business, community groups, government agencies, and the development industry. We have listened to your concerns about development in Ashmore, and we are undertaking more urban design, traffic, and social needs studies. It is vital that development on our urban renewal sites is sustainable, it's well-designed, it's supported by a central infrastructure, especially transport, community facilities, and open space. A 2010 Department of Planning Infrastructure report found increased development in greenfield sites rather than in city urban renewal sites would cost the state $5 billion, that's annually. City fringe development also impacts on our precious farmland. The government has released a Green Paper on Planning. The city is analysing the paper now and preparing a submission. I'm concerned about the proposed enterprise zone, with North Everleigh a possible example, which would have minimal, if any, planning controls. And whilst the proposed growth infrastructure plans to lock infrastructure in at a strategic planning stage is good in principle, there is little detail on the overall strategic planning process. The plan is also considering giving control of major residential, commercial, and retail back to the state government despite repealing Part 3A last year. I think we'll all be concerned about that. The proposed development assessment process fails to deal with important design and planning matters that need merit assessment. This could lead to poor urban design outcomes, and in an urban environment, that is significant. You also asked about precinct committees. Over the past eight years, we have talked to our communities using a range of methods, including meetings, workshops, surveys, and online forums. In 2006, as part of our City of Villages commitment, we asked our communities what local projects they wanted in their neighbourhoods. We developed a local action plan for each neighbourhood, and 90% of those projects are now complete, and we've started a new round of discussions on future projects in our villages. I believe these approaches are more effective than precinct committees. They have enabled tens of thousands of residents to be involved. Precinct committees, such as small number of people, have time to attend regular meetings and could create a risk that outcomes might not represent the community needs at large. In contrast, our plan for the future, Sustainable City 2030, was the most extensive consultation in the city's history. It included more than 12,000 people consulted through workshops, roundtable discussions, and forums. We recorded 157,000 visitors to Customs House during the exhibition period, 18,500 website hits, and 3,500 downloads. Over the past 18 months, we've been researching and consulting about the night-time economy. We've held several workshops and forums with residents, government, police, business, and organisations. We held focus groups with the police and late-night security staff. We've had outreach sessions where we spoke to hundreds of people on the streets, even managed to get the clubbers at all times of the day and night, and we've had our online forums that attracted 11,000 unique visitors and 30,000 page views. Getting on to transport and parking, which I know are key issues in your area. While transport is a state government responsibility, through our advocacy, we've achieved some important wins: a reduction of the Green Square station fee and a commitment from the Planning and Transport Ministers to increase transport in our urban renewal sites as they develop, and we've put light rail on the state government agenda. The economic and environmental impacts of congestion are serious, costing $4 billion a year. If it's business as usual, traffic is predicted to increase by 23% over the next 15 years, with costs blowing out for congestion to $8 billion a year. City staff will soon begin work on a transport plan for the southern part of the city. It will include the Ashmore Urban Renewal Site, other urban renewal sites like Green Square, and other significant developments in your area. The plan will assess the transport needs, identify gaps in public transport services, and recommend improvements, and again, that's strong information that we can put to the state. We know parking is a concern for people in this area. We're currently doing a parking study in Erskineville and recently began a trial in Alexandria of new parking arrangements that include visitor parking permits. If successful, we'll roll out visitor parking permits across the city, but we need to be careful since parking and traffic impacts are connected. We need a range of solutions that just don't increase congestion. One approach is car share, and the city recently received the results of an economic appraisal of the benefits of our car-share policy. The report by SGS Economics and Planning found that the economic benefit of car share provides a $19 return for every dollar spent, and that one car-share place can replace 12 cars, thereby reducing congestion. My team does research, we consult, and we commit, and then we get things done. Sydney Park, for example, has had extensive landscaping, including grass amphitheatre for community events, a new and quite wonderful Allabilties playground, a popular kiosk café, water harvesting, and extensive work in the wetlands. We're now seeking community views on a city farm proposal in a smaller area of a park, and we recognise the value of the brick kilns, and we're committed to developing options for their future. We've improved many other parks and playgrounds in your area, including Borough Reserve, Coshofer Number Two Playground, Flora Night Reserve, Rochford Street Playground, Pinkstone Playground, Greenbands Park, Union Street Playground, W.J. Thorburn Reserve, Larkin Street Reserve, Union Street Park, Goddard Street Playground. Lilian Park Reserve has been transformed with a new playground and adventure play area and an underground stormwater harvesting system. We're renovating Erskineville Town Hall with the completion early in 2013. We know that many people in this area are concerned about sustainability and the impact of climate change, and my team is committed to continuing action. We've signed a development agreement with CoGen Energy to introduce low-carbon precincts to take the city off the coal-fired electricity grid. We've greened our city with 7,500 new trees planted over eight years. We've reduced waste, we've introduced energy-efficient LED and park lights, we've improved energy and water performance. We care for our diverse communities, giving free rates to pensioners, expanding aged and community services, increasing childcare places by 32%. We do more for homeless people than any other council in Australia. We provide services for older residents at the Cliff Noble Centre in Alexandria, transport meals on wheels, free computer use, community worker, recreational activities; while educational employment and recreational programmes for young people are provided through the Erskineville Youth Programme. We're committed to supporting the cultural life of our city, not only through major festivals and events, but through our local cultural activities. These include support for the Sydney Fringe Festival, a major event for the inner west, which is getting underway in just a fortnight. We're increasing affordable and creative spaces in our properties for new artists and creative enterprises, and we support business with seminars, newsletters, targeted grants programmes, and we coordinate and fund popular annual business awards, and we've championed small bars, providing a cool place for people to socialise. The team I lead is committed to innovative solutions for our tough city problems. We have a proven record championing our communities, and we'll continue to deliver practical results. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edward Mannlin from Liberal Party.
I thank you to Ben Abling for organising this Candidates' Forum, and good evening to the leaders and members of Alexandria Residents' Action Group, Friends of Erskineville, Flag, Harold Park, Hands Off Glebe, and community members here. I'd like to acknowledge a couple of my running partners here. Shaun O'Connor, if you could stand up, please. Shaun is our campaign manager. And Tony Erickson's very shy, but Tony is known in our campaign as Mr. Spreadsheet, so that might explain why he's shy. We live in very busy times, people have very full lives, and thank you for your time. It's a feature of Sydney that there's so many dedicated community members who aren't prepared to give up their time and to be active and to be vigilant. It's scary to think what it would be like without your efforts. Even with you watching over the shoulders of council, you're subjected to pretty much endless finger-pointing, Clovermore's famous managed roadshows, and your opinion is always welcome, provided you agree with the Lord Mayor. Now, after 24 years, Clovermore has lost away. The Liberals, we've got a plan for safer streets. This is going to be released next week. The Liberals have a plan for cutting waste or spending. On Friday, Malcolm Turnbull is going to have a major policy launch with us, and it's something that will positively affect each and every person in this room. The Liberals have a plan for accommodating both bikes and carts. Now, I know it's going to be questions tonight, and I will shortly address that, but what I can tell you is Liberals are going to put an end to close hatred of car ownership. The Liberals have a plan for supporting local businesses. If we don't support them, we are going to lose them. We've already lost plenty of them. And we're announcing tonight, we're going to remove those horrid pavement dining levies that hold back del fresco dining and they just strangle those port operators. We're going to be providing parking for local business owners so that they can be more productive, and we're going to be providing 15-minute free parking to encourage "park local, buy local", and there's more announcements coming with Malcolm Turnbull on Friday in this area. Now, the Liberals have a plan for today and not just 2030. Look, you'd be pretty good to predict what it's going to be like in five years' time. What's happening in communications and technology at the moment is just staggering. But we've got a council that wants to develop a vision of a 2030 iPhone. Yeah, the Lord Mayor is a lot of things, but not Steve Jobs. Quite frankly, we're going to put a lot of these programmes under the microscope. We see them as endless nutty schemes, like power plants in our neighbourhood and turtling affluent into water. We're also not going to bulldoze Darling Harbour and move it to central either. Now, let's turn on the question of precinct committees. They look really good on paper, but ultimately, they really snuff out groups like your own. That would be a tragedy. We need your vigilance, we need your voice of reason. I think that it's a risky proposition, and the risks outweigh the benefits. Friends of councillors are going to find their way onto precinct committees. Political interests will hijack them, and people will become afraid to criticise. A strong council like the City of Sydney, it's going to drip feed these precinct groups, and they're going to find strategies how to neutralise them. And do we really need another layer of bureaucracy? That before something goes to council, that it's got to go into a queue to get to a precinct committee? Ultimately, council will use them to drive out community groups. We need more community groups, not less. We need an in-touch council that holds genuine community meetings, not staged managed roadshows that we have under Clovermore's spin machine. Now, I'm still getting over the public meeting for on-street parking in Erskineville and Newtown Health a few weeks ago. Now, it felt to me more like a prison orientation than it did a meeting. It was totally clear that the community knew far more than the council about the local issues. They're annualised fancy consultants, and it was just all mouth and just no ears. I'd prefer to see some best practice models, where real community meetings happen in consultations, and they're backed up with qualitative and quantitative data. So, you have a third of the data coming out of community consultations, a third coming out of focus groups, and another third from polling. So, you've got community consultations, some focus groups with the community, and then you poll the community. That way, the community and council will have some informed decision-making, and you're really going to have an underpinning of two-way communication. So, the issue of denying some residents access to on-street and onsite parking based on the age of their property is, of course, the infamous Labor DCP11 parking policy. It was crafted and implemented by the former South Sydney Council and enthusiastically embraced by the car-eating Clovermore along with the Greens. So, the model is set to impossibly low maximums for parkings in new developments, and then they're going to deny, then you get denied a parking permit for the street, and it's got that little spice of it that it's really shameful to own a vehicle. Look, I spoke to a couple recently, where the husband had a youth for work, wife needed the cars to ferry the kids to school. Yeah, it's just a nightmare for them. Look, we make them feel unwanted, and we're driving good people out of the area. Our car-friendly policy is that every new development will have one off-street parking space per apartment. If you don't have a parking space, then you should be entitled to a street parking permit. I'd also like to see some of those council car parks come back to help relieve the pressure for residents and business alike. Now, clearly, development pace is outstripping infrastructure. Well, the days of building a harbour bridge with 75 years excess capacity, look, they're gone. But public transport's got to keep pace with local government planning. As the Liberal Lord Mayor, I will require a local infrastructure test. Now, this will be applied for informed assessment of all major developments. It's more than ramming through bike paths. We need to make sure we've got the right train and bus capacities. We have to look at light rail options throughout the area. But this highlights how, after 24 years, Clover has more than lost away. She's lost her relationships. You need to have relationships, you need to have influence with the state government to get the job done for the community. I'll be working hard with the right ministers to have our area looked after, particularly planning, transport, roads, and police. As the Green paper, it's a discussion paper. After 20 years, our planning laws certainly need an airing. I like how certain Sydney suburbs or streets which have a distinct character will be declared virtually no-go zones to developers, but I also like enterprising zones, they're going to be targeted to attract business and associated infrastructure that that will bring. My local infrastructure test will be important, as will be my relationships and influence with the state government. Clovermore's been treating the rate payers and businesses as a money tree for nutty schemes. She's lost away, strangling this tree with random spending, leading us with unsafe streets, struggling businesses, high costs, and no parking. For example, she plans to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on power plants in the neighbourhood. Power plants are going to be spewing out health-damaging nitrogen oxide. This is money that could be put to better use, including infrastructure. This is money that could be put to better use, including infrastructure. Or if there's no desire to do the basics, or if it's become boring to do that after 24 years, then let's just can these nutty schemes and return some of the money back to the community. It's a treasure trove. If there is too much money, you should get some back. I will drive the council back to basics. There won't be endless finger pointing, there won't be managed roadshows, there will be common sense, and your opinion will be heard, it will be treated with respect, and even if I disagree, I'll have open ears and I might be persuaded. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angela Bivulcus of the Living Sydney.
Good evening. My name is Angela Bivulcus, and I'm the Lord Mayor or candidate for Living Sydney. I'd also like to acknowledge the original custodians of this land and elders both past and present. Thank you all so much for coming this evening. I know it's tough sometimes to take a night out of your routine. A lot of you have families and kids and other commitments, and coming here this evening shows your commitment to your community, that you have questions and that you're here very much to listen to what all of us have to say about the future that affects everybody here. I'm a small business owner, and I have been in the City of Sydney for 27 years, and I'm a resident as well. My entire business life has been here in this community of the City of Sydney, and I accepted this challenge to be a candidate for the upcoming elections because I felt this was a great way for me to serve the community and to give back, especially a community that has supported me for so many years. A very important part of why you're all here this evening is because you're angry and upset about so many things that affect your daily lives, and this is what I want to maintain the focus on. 2030 vision is great, and we have to have a long-term plan, but let's expand the now. Let's address immediately what we can do to change your life now. And parking and DAs, of course, are right up there, because if you have to drive around and around and around the block, trying to find a spot for your car, trying to get into your home to cook dinner, put a load of washing on, probably do 50 emails and plan another business project, or talk to your friends, or see your spouse or partner, and by the time you get in, it's been 30 or 40 minutes, if you're lucky, you probably don't get in at night in a happy mood, and especially not if you've got to walk an equal distance in the morning to get to it. It is arrogant of council to assume that residents don't want or need a car. I truly believe that the city is worse off today than it was five years ago, and it's time to change. Living Sydney has a three-point plan, and it's all about the community. We want to give Sydney back to the people, and that's all about true community engagement. It's not about endless consultations up the wazoo, it's not about endless committees, thousands of reports, it's about you. It's about the residents, and it's about the small business owners, and what council needs to do to act, to act for you. That's why you vote council in. As your Lord Mayor, my priority is true community engagement. My priority is accessibility and accountability. When you're not happy, I should know it, and it shouldn't take a year or longer, and it shouldn't take five or six years of consultations. That's why Living Sydney supports residents groups and precincts, and they should be funded from council at arm's length with no interference from council. I've spoken to many of you and lots of residents groups. Your volunteers who work extremely hard to inform your community about what's going on, you face the same engagement challenges. You have to raise money to print out leaflets, to maintain websites, just to get to everybody in your area. Quite often, you struggle to raise funds for this. Council should assist because the residents groups fight for your behalf, and they are the ones, they are the ones on the grounds, grassroots, trying to get to everybody to inform you of the DA that's coming up, because the current notification plan is 25 metres, and it should be extended to the suburb, if not a greater area, even so, if a big DA is sitting, straddling the line between one suburb and another. Big DAs affect people in a much larger area than 25 metres, and that needs to be acknowledged and looked at, and that can be fixed immediately. And when those DAs are put in and the notifications are sent out, they should be simple and easy for you to understand. You shouldn't need a law degree or a barrister to understand what's going on, and very clear references should be made to the conditions in that DA. You shouldn't have to go back through endless website pages and links or hope that you kept another piece of paper to find out what is actually going on. We want to give Sydney back to the people. The residents and the small business owners deserve better. You have been neglected and you've been ignored. Now, citizens' jury panel is an ideal situation. There's an example happening at Canada Bay. The New South Wales Public Accounts Committee is also undergoing a similar process in their thoughts on gathering information on energy. And when there are big public issues that affect you, you should have input, and council should pledge to act on new findings. When a group of the community comes together and there is true representation, gender, age, work situation, when all of these people come together, and it is a random selection, because again, it's at arm's length of council, there is no interference from council, and yes, people are paid because your time is valuable, and you have the right to access all information. You have the right to ask for experts, for reports, for anything that you need so that your decision is made based on information, clarity, and common sense, because as your Lord Mayor, I trust you to make the right decisions for you. We will fix the mess. Yes, the City of Sydney is in a mess. Look at the parking. As your Lord Mayor, I will look at reviewing all parking situations immediately. There needs to be an assessment of loading zones, no standing zones, parking spaces that have been taken away from you. Almost 1,000 parking spaces have been removed. We need to look at that immediately. Go-get-car-share spots, fantastic idea, wonderful for sustainability. But prime positions have been given over to a commercial entity. There are spots taken up with go-get-car-shares in front of supermarkets so that residents can't stop and run in and grab milk, bread, a paper, eggs. Why? There are other spaces available for a commercial entity, and it shouldn't impact on the residents, and it shouldn't impact on small business. Triple bottom line, that's something council doesn't consider, and they should. When council makes decisions, they should take into account the economic impact of that decision. They should take into account the social impact of that decision, and of course, they should take into account the environmental impact of that decision. But it's a triple bottom line. All of those things matter. If you take away any one of those things, you will end up with a disaster, and the 2030 vision will mean nothing because we aren't expanding the now. Sydney is good, but it needs to be great. We're slipping on the world stage, we're losing our ranking, we are considered inferior. Melbourne is beating us, we outsourced our cleaning contract to Melbourne City Council. There's something wrong with that. Now, I don't believe there's been sufficient or adequate consideration regarding DAs. When approvals are given to 122 units, or 160 units, excuse me, with 22 parking spaces, how is that not going to invoke a problem for the community? Infrastructure is not considered, it's dubbed on state government. Council must be your advocate, and the Lord Mayor should fight hard for you. The Green Paper, I have concerns about the Green Paper. I'm worried about council abdicating authority on some issues that regard the community, and external experts making judgements and passing DAs, and the enterprise zones. How will they affect infrastructure and the community? How will they affect business and residents? I don't believe enough detail has been given. We will fund resident and precinct committees at arm's length and give them the tools and the resources and the advantage of council and help them to help themselves. Every time I speak to a residence group or a business partnership group, they identify their problems and they identify their solutions. You already know what you need. We need to give you the respect and listen and act.
Thanks, Angela. Our next... Our next speaker is independent Dixie Coulter, who's now got the mic.
Good evening, everyone. It's actually "Oh, N" at the end, but that's okay. Everybody says that. I have lived in the inner city, in the city, King's Cross, Elizabeth Bay, Paddington, Darlinghurst, all my adult life. I have worked in the city. I have raised my two children with my husband. My children are 19 and 20, in the inner city, in King's Cross and Elizabeth Bay. I was on the city council from 1999 to 2004. I was on the Frank Sato independent team. Lucy, when Frank Sato went to state parliament, Lucy became mayor and I became deputy mayor from 2003 to 2004. On that council, we achieved significant things. We hosted the Olympics, we built the recital wall in Angel Place, Cook and Philip Park, refurbished the ABC pool, Custard's House, Capital Theatre, we spent $300 million on the Olympics with the streets, and then we handed over to Clovermore's council in 2004 a very significantly strong economic council, making it one of the most secure in Australia, whereby that council was earning revenue of $60 to $70 million per annum. Then, of course, the state government sacked our council and collapsed it into what we now know as the dis electorate with both South Sydney and the city. Now, I have been involved in various community activities since I left council in 2004, and one was involved in trying to keep Rory Miles, who was the tennis operator at Rush Cavers Bay Park for 32 years. He was loved by all of the community, and this council made it impossible for him to stay on. And if I were elected, then I would do everything I could to bring back this particular man. This council talks about having a soul. It had no soul when it came to that man, and our communities were the poor, and our community was definitely the poorer. I've been involved in trying to maintain Fitzroy Gardens, a heritage garden from being sort of over-concreted and cleaned up, and we have been successful, but now that seems to be ignored, and there's another fight about that just immediately prior to this election put on by this council, where we have young people with children fighting against other members of the community, who are, those people are now seen to be anti-car in our community. Now, what I'm very concerned about is this particular council seems to be fostering an incredible amount of conflict and division within the communities. Our communities basically are wonderful in that they have a great cross-section of people, and that's why we all live in the inner city, because we love this cross-section of people. And to have a council which is representing people at a local level foster or engage in conflicts with each other is not right. It seems to me that this council is not managing that or playing wedge politics a lot of the time, and we know what that means. Now, I got involved in this, put my hand in the ring to stand for the Lord Mayorty just really in the matter of the last few weeks. I have, and I got involved because of the issue with King's Cross and the sad death of that young man, that it really brought to a head the failure of the planning policies of this particular council, that they have had concentrated alcohol venues in the one spot, getting 20,000 to 25,000 young people coming into the city on a Friday and Saturday night, causing mayhem for themselves and for the residents. So my view is that when I heard the Lord Mayor blame the state government for what has happened, that really made me very concerned. A little bit of my feeling. Well, because when you are representing people on a local level, you can't get involved in blame shifting, and the problems that we have aren't going to be resolved in the cross and other places in the electorate when local government blames the state government. There has to be, if one is genuine about fixing problems, there has to be a collaborative approach between the parties. Now, I have a great team, I have all residents who are on my ticket, I have five other people, they have all basically lived in the electorate all their adult lives. I even have one person who's number three on my ticket, Madeline Panucchio, who was bred and born in Surry Hills, and so now she has a business there as an adult. And I have Robbie Hall, who's number two on my ticket, she's a 32-years resident of Darlinghurst, and she's here tonight. I, so I have a team who are residents and work in the city, so they have a genuine understanding of how it works, and they got on the ticket because they are very dissatisfied with the lack of a voice of this council. This council is not listening to the community. They spend hundreds of thousands, they say, on sending out leaflets and questionnaires to everybody, but they never seem to understand or take any notice of what anyone wants. So I agree that there should be precinct committees so that you can, as a council and councillors, can get to understand what are the issues. Mind you, it's not too hard for a lot of the councillors to actually get out and see what's going on and talk to people in the area and get to understand the issues, particularly if you've been on council for a number of years. Now, obviously, one of the issues that is just driving people insane is this incredibly extreme ideology of being anti-car. I have been a Greenie all my adult life, but you cannot just be anti-car. We like bicycles, we like all forms of transport. Obviously, public transport should be, it should be encouraged with spending by the state government, and that's what we need, but... But you can't have public transport in each street and you have to be able to have to drive your car when you need to do it, to get to hospital or whatever. I think this attitude of being purely anti-car misunderstands inner-city living. I never drive to work. It'd be crazy. It'd take me far too long. It's quicker for me. And this anti-car attitude is really, as many of the speakers are saying, is really causing economic hardship to the businesses in the city centre and the urban centres. The main, for instance, in Oxford Street, all the shops are closed, there's so many shops that have closed down. In Crown Street, Surry Hills, business owners there and residents are really upset about the amount of closures and it is difficult to get there. If you want to live, you want to be able to visit your village and visit another village, you've got to at times be able to get in your car to stop. The only way you get people to places is they've got to get in all forms of transport.
Thanks, Dixie. Sorry, tough job. Our next speaker is Linda Scott, who is the candidate for the Labor Party.
I might also shun the microphone. Can people hear me if I just stand and speak? Great. It was a lovely musical interlude, but it might be easier if I don't use it tonight. Now, I know we've been going for about an hour, so does everyone want to have a just two-second stand-up and wake up? Because that's a long time to sit. I know it's very difficult to listen to people for that long. Good work, the stretching. Anyway, thanks very much. So, yes, as Mike said, my name's Linda Scott. I'm the Labor candidate for Lord Mayor and running with a strong community team of Labor and inner-city activists for the City of Sydney Council. I'd like to start by also acknowledging that we're on Gadigal land and pay respect to their elders, both past and present. And also, I thank the organisers, Mike and Vanessa and others, who have put a lot of effort into inviting you along today and making sure that you're more informed for the council elections. As the former Chair of the Surry Hills Neighbourhood Centre, I know how hard it is to put work into community groups and give up your free time to put effort into making your community a better place. And so, I applaud you all for coming along tonight and trying to do that. Some of you may know that I was selected as Labor's candidate through a community pre-selection. So, some of you in the room may have voted as part of that process. Everyone who was on the electoral roll had a vote to determine who Labor's candidate was going to be. And we put forward a series of candidates and wanted to have a very transparent process to determine who would be the face of Labor for the City of Sydney. As part of that, I have been door-knocking for months and months and months, all across the city, as part of the community pre-selection and now as part of the campaign proper, to speak to people about what their thoughts are about the City of Sydney and what its future should be. And as I door-knock, people are telling me time and time again that they love the city. They love it as a place where they can walk to their work or they can, you know, they know their neighbours and they're very happy living here. But they're also telling me that they're feeling like it's lost its sense of community and that's something they want to bring back. So, my vision for Sydney and my team's vision for Sydney is that we want a Sydney for everyone. We want to make Sydney a place that is diverse and we want to make sure that the people who want to stay here can stay here and can continue to live here. So, that is our vision. I live in Erskineville with my husband and my two little boys. We have chosen to stay in the city and raise our children and we are really invested in the future of this city. We want to make it a great place for our two boys, but also for everyone else in the city and that's very, very important for us. I want to make sure that we have great ovals so that my children can grow up and, you know, play sport hopefully for the Alexandra Rovers. But, you know, we want to make it a place where all sorts of diverse communities feel comfortable living and staying. I'm also really proud about the history that Labor has in South Sydney and I think that that's an important component of the story of the City of Sydney. I know many people have told me, again, door-knocking this area, that they feel that they're a bit removed from the administration of Town Hall and that South Sydney is sometimes forgotten or overlooked in a vision of Sydney. I feel that and I understand that and that's why I'm very supportive of the idea of wards and of local precinct committees, to ensure that each area is actually genuinely represented and that each area has a vision and a plan for its area and that each area feels like it's equally connected with Town Hall, no matter the distance. So, that's a very important plank of our platform. I should say that Labor at the last election campaigned heavily in favour of the referendum on wards. We were really upset to see that lost and I'm quite happy to commit here this evening to moving a motion on council to initiate that process again for the next election after this one, because I believe it's incredibly important. I was doing a street stall a couple of weekends ago. It's actually really sad. My oldest son's favourite words, when I walk out of her house, he says, "Bye-bye, mummy", door-knocking meeting, which is really terrible. But I brought him along with me the other morning to a street stall down at Everleigh Markets and we were down there and my husband took him down to see some of the old rail yards, because he's tragically obsessed with trains. And he had the time of his life. He has been talking for weeks about the train yards and how the old trains get fixed down there and how amazing it is. And I guess for me, it really brings home the story of how important heritage is and how important our local sites are, like North Everleigh. And how important it is that we maintain that heritage and that we preserve it for the future generations of Sydney when we're developing it. We've talked a lot about the fact that we would introduce community developer accords. This is the idea that when a developer first approaches council, first approaches council to develop a large site, like the Ashmore Estate, which is going to double the population of Erskineville, or North Everleigh, that the community is brought to the table at that stage. We don't want community consultation when the deal has been done with the developer. We want community consultation at the beginning of the process. We want the community to have a seat at the table all the way through the development process, because we know that the community has issues with the development itself, but also the community knows that their local childcare spots are full. The community knows that their primary schools are overflowing. The community knows that they can't get on the bus or the train in the morning. And the council needs to either do something about fixing those problems where it's within its ambit or be a strong voice to other levels of government to ensure that other levels of government are hearing that message. I mean, I respect what Mr Mandla had to say tonight, but frankly, the Liberal State Government's planning green paper totally removes community consultation from the development process about specific developments. That is completely inappropriate. It is completely inappropriate. We know that on council, we won't have the legislative basis to consult people, right? We don't have to, but what I'm arguing is that community developer accords will be a voluntary mechanism that the City of Sydney Council will undertake to give people a seat at the table from the very beginning. Because we think that communities need to be empowered to talk about and listen to and have a say in the future of where they live. We know also that this area, you know, is constantly crowded by people, but also by parking. It is really high up the list of concerns that people raise with me when we're door-knocking around this area. I've heard several stories. I had a woman tell me about a development on Mackerboy Street, that she ran the council. There's a block of flats going up next door to her and she was concerned that there was a, you know, set level of parking and it didn't meet, you know, the needs of the people that she thought were going to move in there. She was told by the council, unfortunately, that if she wanted to have a car in her area, she should just leave. You know, and that, to me, again, is frankly unacceptable. I think that go-get schemes are good. I think that public transport is good, but also, you know, some people need cars and we need to accommodate that. My son's local childcare centre have currently got a petition going, because lots of parents from the inner city drop their children off, park their cars for the day and catch public transport, rather than, you know, leaving their cars in other places that are more crowded in the inner city. So, they're actually doing the right thing, but the council, well, the council is, you know, is stopping them from using the public transport. So, you know, it's my view, we really need to take a street-by-street approach to parking and think through what are very, very complicated issues in this area. The final thing I say is that we also believe in a strong investment in infrastructure. We've announced that if we were elected, we would conduct a feasibility study into getting the power cables and information cables underground at the same time as the federal government rollout of the NBN. We believe this is a good reason, a good idea for a couple of reasons. One is because it's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to harness what is already a government scheme coming down every street and we think it's the cheapest way to do it in conjunction with the rollout of the NBN. The other reason we think it's good is because it allows you to have tree-lined boulevards that are taller than the power lines, once those lines are underground. And it also significantly saves people money on their power bills. People are struggling in the inner city, not everyone, but many, and we know that putting cables underground halves the cost of their maintenance.
Thanks, Linda.
And makes energy efficiency better. Thanks.
Thanks a lot. Now, last speaker this evening is Dennis Doherty, on behalf of the Housing Action Group. Thank you, Dennis.
I'll try the Mike method. Does everybody hear me? Okay, thank you, everyone. Good evening and thanks to the organisers. My name is Dennis Doherty, as you can see, and I'm from the Housing Action Team. The leaflets have been put around, this colour leaflet here, and some of my team are there. Andrew and Roel are there and Sport is over there as well. So, first of all, I too acknowledge the Aboriginal, that I stand on Aboriginal land and I pay my respects to Aboriginal elders, past and present. Indigenous issues are more than formulas for us in the Housing Action Team. We have an indigenous person, indigenous leader, on our team, Ray Jackson. Now, many of you will remember the film called The Castle. The storyline is the story of a guy who's living in his precious house and it has to be bulldozed to make way for improvements to the Melbourne Airport. And in that house is a Daryl Kerrigan. And Daryl Kerrigan is played by Michael Cavan. He succeeds in saving his house against all odds. Now, that's a very pleasant and lovely little story and it ends beautifully with Daryl Kerrigan winning. And, but we know that if a Daryl Kerrigan lived in Sydney, in the Sydney City Council area in the last four years, it wouldn't have been such a happy little story. We know, we know also that that film was a film where the expression, "Tell him he's dreaming". Tell him he's dreaming. You're probably sitting there saying, "Tell Dennis he's dreaming." Housing, housing is, housing is, everyone should buy their own home and not rely on government. Not everyone can do that. Our team argues a home is a human right for everyone living in Sydney, a human right. You may be interested to know that the government spends six times more on private housing than it does on public housing, six times more. Or you might be saying, "Dennis is dreaming." It's just too expensive to provide housing for people, just too expensive. In a recent article, Professor Forson of the University of New South Wales said that the government is spending $1 billion, $1 billion on motels for emergency accommodation for homeless people who are suddenly made homeless. It's not the needy who are sucking up the government, it's the hotel owners. If that money was spent on housing, affordable housing, this sort of thing wouldn't be happening. And you're probably thinking, "Dennis is dreaming. Housing is a state issue." But the Clovermore team, with the support of the ALP and the Liberals, have been deconstruction, destroying public housing in our area, in our region. They're reducing it and allowing the, its destruction to continue apace. It says in its own 2030 vision statement that it intends to reduce social housing in the Sydney areas from 10% to 7%. We think that amounts to social cleansing and we intend that it should be more. We say that people of all incomes should be welcome in Sydney and there should be provision made for them. If it's not a council issue, the Clovermore blog site boasts that they have provided 60 affordable houses. 60! That's pathetic. That's pathetic in this day and age of a housing crisis. 60 is pathetic numbers. Well, housing is not purely a state matter. Local government does have a say in it through DAs and other measures. We can do something about it. A local government attuned to this issue of housing and affording housing would, and affordable housing would not vote for everything that is put before it by the state. You may be interested to know that 20% of our people in this region are in housing stress. That's in the private sector. They're under rental stress or mortgage stress. And then the people in the housing, public housing sector, they're quivering as well because they know that someday a knock is going to come on their doors, just like Joan Parr in Glee. Forty-three years in the one place, paying her rent for 43 years, turfed out. Yesterday, I got a phone call from a guy in Redfern, had just been turfed out. This is not something that happens some time ago, it's happening now and it's not fair. We should live in a city where it's fair. Now, that means that 30% of our residents are in housing stress. And yet, all this happens while all levels of government continue to sit on their hands. Housing stress causes knock-on effects. It affects health, it affects mental health, it affects education. I was speaking once to a group and this teacher came up to me crying, saying that students in her class come to school hungry. Not, this is not years ago, this is this year, come to her class hungry because their family, their parents can't afford to pay for food. It is time we got active on this issue. It's not dreaming because we see article after article. This happened, this is from Monday, Monday's Media. The Australian Council of Social Services, survey of almost 700 agencies around the country, found that the greatest area of need is housing. It found that 81% of housing and homelessness services could not meet their requirements and had to turn away 20,000 people. That's just from a few days ago. I want to deal briefly with the specific questions. Question one about the green paper and development. The new green paper comes out of a Liberal government, a government that we are suspicious of, a person from my background would be automatically suspicious of, because we would think that they would favour developers rather than the community. That's our suspicion. The new green paper seems to emphasise speed and the ease for the private sector to get things done, to get things done quickly. And you know, if you do things quickly, you make terrible botches. And when you make a botch of a building, it stays there for 40, 50 years. We are highly critical that the community will be expected to comment upfront on abstract issues, while when the DAs come in, there won't be any ability to... while when the DAs come in, there won't be any ability to comment on concrete plans. In our view, denying the community the right to object to aspects of specific projects will undermine the ability to exercise any control over development. The Housing Action Group would be happy with the right of the community to have generalised rights as well as to be able to comment on specific rights. Take, for example, the Ashmore Industrial Estate, an effective doubling of the Erko community, and yet there's not much change in the infrastructure. Will the proposed enterprise don't have any effect on that? We say no, it won't. It'll make things worse. The Housing Action Team believes these enterprise areas will not help. They will, quote, "have very little if any development controls," unquote. Sort of hurrying the last couple of points. The only reference to infrastructure provision is the possibility that the state or local government may provide it. We are offering a fighting council, a council that will resist change on your behalf. We do not openly and easily accept what the state delivers to us. In regard to better communication, we say in our leaflet, the writing's too small. Wards will be brought back into Sydney council to help make councillors more accessible and responsive. And then we say we need regular ward meetings for transparent participatory democracy. We would also support the North Sydney model of precinct meetings. We experienced those when we were in the Leichhardt Council area, when we were in Glebe, and they worked fairly well.
Thanks very much, Dennis. That concludes the part of the evening where each candidate had ten minutes to speak. I'm now going to hand over to Vanessa, who will chair the next session of about thirty-five minutes of questions on the floor.